They um you'll find on the forecast even though some of the numbers were had went up over the time. The actual net balance of which is a negative cash balance in year fours and fives are actually better. Then they were before we did on the old calculations so. It's doing a little better and historically not just here but any you will find that as we go along. Things always seem a little better because people will see what's coming and do a little better with it. Um if you click on the actual forecast, the updated. See here the. That our revenue. I just can't figure it goes up slightly from year to year. We're estimating this year end up with about fourteen million total for the year. And as you can see, it slightly rises each year, doesn't get carried away and all this will be and also. Because there's an income tax in here, if we get some growth and um businesses start picking up a little more. You'll see a you'll see that line grow quicker than anything else on here. Uh that seems to be the we could easy you could easily pick up a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars in there without too much trouble. Okay, but based on history, this is where you can come up so. Numbers down below that are. It's in general numbers that kind of balance about every year about the same, they don't jump around too much. So that's that's why I usually go with the upper line rather than come down there. Um expenditure, as you can see, payroll is jumping right along. Um part of that's due to the. New contract and part of it is also built around the fact that we've had to hire some new employees. Just because of the growth, so that's going to be a situation when that goes up. The benefits go up because so many of them are figured as a percentage of their income, especially like this. Uh S T S for the teachers, the retirement. Um as we talked before, the um medical insurance was. Reasonable, three and a half percent, I guess that's reasonable.
Yes, this uh we were when we seen uh snow gently greater than that last year, so it's actually a blessing.
Well, it's that's what's figured in there happened now. I think the next years after that are figured a little bit higher than that, but not much, a little, you know, growth as usual. Um see the um. Purchase services, once again, we're buying a lot of that would be coming from. The E S C employees, we get D S C employees, um utilities, those are all purchase services. So that's what you'll see in there, it's tends to be a line that there's really not too much we can do about it. Because we have to have the teachers, it's either E S C or we hire them, we put our line so. The next line after that is supplies and we're finding that supplies usage this year was down a little bit from prior year. Um it's not, I mean, when I say down, it's down with the projection. Okay, maybe I should word it better, but once again. It's like everything else, it's a show growth, not big, but a little bit each year. Um once again, this will be inflation there, it'll get you more than anything. And the last line is capital um with the rebuilding, with everything else going up. Um this replacing existing equipment, furniture. It's not a something that you just have to do, I guess it's kind of like everything else, you have to take care of it. You have to repair stuff, but you have to take care of it too to replace it because it's. It's only made for so long. So all said and done, come down. Down a little bit, you down two around, it shows the negative balances there where you are and that's showing.
There's excess of revenues and other things.
That's where you're basically, that's what we're saying, the bottom line would be at the end of each year. Now, taking that into consideration, you go drop down a couple lines and that's shows how much cash you should have in the bank. One more down is the, I believe that's the cash in the bank.
Cash mount June thirtieth.
Yeah, on June thirty of the years, so. Um bottom line and forecast are all good and wonderful, but after year one, because we're going to a new budget in the state. And there's so many other, they're talking about changing the financing of schools. So many ways which I don't think, honestly do not think it will completely happen because they can't afford it. Um but that's leaves us with leaves you the positive balance of almost one point five million, which. Isn't great, but it's a lot better than a lot of them I've seen and I'm sure a lot of you've had to see over the years too.
Yes, um just for clarification though, uh starting here, it'll be starting deficit spending.
Right.
And this line is.
That's twenty twenty three, twenty twenty two, I'm sorry, that will be next year, okay?
And then it compounds as we go through sort of deficit spending next year out.
That's projected.
Projected, that'll be something we'll be able to keep eye on as we're going through that, but in year to determine what actions we may need to take to reduce negative spending.
Yeah, that's the whole thing is you can, that's the item, if you know ahead of time a little bit, you. Wait a little bit to spend, you cut down a little bit, you get by with something, you learn that, yes, I can sometimes. And I found that myself, I'm just as the alias all the rest. We all tend to be a little strong on what we put in there for expenditure to begin with. Knowing that there may be a problem, I'd rather have the problem covered and then not have the problem than the other way around.
Yes, right.
And this is basically forecast by the information that I gave her, gave them and another lady helped me. We put together as much of the information as we could and sent it to them. And so this is on the state's website now.
And we'll be voting to approve uh this five year forecast um at our next meeting.
That is correct. So regular meeting, I can say this is how this is the actual forecast, I. The way they've got it out there now is kind of hard, I thought kind of hard to read, so I put it back in the same format that is. What historically has been out there.
Okay.
And like I said, if you want to look at the other page, just this is something you can look at later, it's nothing that important.
Okay.
Sure.
I had asked you sell H twelve, which is fiscal year twenty twenty two property tax. Is there a reason that dips a hundred thousand dollars because normally property tax increases every year? That was the only thing I saw and it's it's a hundred and some thousand dollars, but I just wanted to check what assumptions had been made to that.
I'm not hundred percent sure, I just I know that when you use the. Formulas and different that they work with these, then it will come out some years with a negative and. Some of it becomes a part of. What do I want to say, how about how things are calculated beyond this office? This C A U D may change, if they change that, that would change some of this, it may turn down, we put it up. Okay, see any reason issue here?
Right, but if you're a lover, you'll never feel that way, so I was especially with the growth, I I think it's not a big deal. I just I I imagine it'll come in around where we were last year, give or take twenty or thirty thousand. So it just, that was the only cell that even looked at all of this forecast, so if that's the only thing I saw.
And once again, I I use the the calculations that they do, the formula system, I've used that before.
Okay.
And I've had years when it'll probably show up for some reason, one year it'll come up, just a little look. And it might be because of some estimated um delinquencies that will come in, they got the link, he's paid this year, but you mean that.
We got hundreds of them, I wanted to confirm, I must have been during the COVID, we didn't see it changing.
That's funny, that's I know that.
I'm assuming there's probably some uh assumptions in the software.
It's that's probably, yeah, can give you, when I was working in Montgomery County, that was an automatic five percent delinquency.
Sure, sure, different districts obviously had greater delinquencies than we didn't.
We were we were two percent, but it's it's still, that was a safety net they put in.
Well, if it changes, it's not a big deal, we can update it later, but that that just looks a little low.
And I assume that based on coming out of the COVID with some of the changes. Uh we could see a little less collection this year going into twenty two.
Part of it, part of that number is based on timing, because remember that half of it's in one year, half of it's in the other year. So if everybody paid most of paid more than their half. The first the first payment, the second, that's somebody will, and that's going to affect next year, which is going to be next year.
Well, unless people pay again full amount, so I know there was one year we did have a bump because of the way the tax law changed. Or you weren't going to be able to handle exemptions, so a lot of people prepaid taxes, so we did see a weird bump that one year I do. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this spreadsheet?
So if you have any questions, don't be afraid, just give me a call or stop in or whichever and we'll try to get answers for you.
All right, and then.
I just have a general question, so Brennan was pretty conservative as a treasurer. Can you kind of tell us in the community, your philosophy, like I know you just talk about the expenditures and, you know, how do you typically do things?
Well, typically you look at the revenue and you assume that it's probably going to be three to four percent higher than what's shown there. Because that's how you, that's how you plan, because you always hope that you're going to get to this number, but you make the assumption you won't. So that what the number is you're looking at is a number that is reasonable. Attainable, but I really in my bottom, I think it's gonna be better than that. But you be, then you take the expenditures and just look the other way. I see those being the safe side. Barring a major type of problem, most of these are usually built in to cover. A little more than what you'd normally expect to be expenditures for repairs, maintenance, this type of thing. And you'll end up the year doing just a little better in that area. So, yes, it does become a. Situation where the budget's given out, won't be up very much from what they were, you have to up at all. But at the same time, we know if we could keep that budget the same, even the revenue is the same, we're doing okay. So that tends to be the goal, you you try to give people a little less than what you think they can spend. So if they go over, they're not, you're not upset with them. At least you'll pretend to be upset with them. But it's it's psychological a little bit, you have to remember that they can stay within because you'll find that most people at the end of the year have money. But if you keep giving them the same amount, they will stay, they will they will try to stay down low because they did it once, they can do it again. If you start cutting their budgets every year. Because well, they don't spend it so heavily, well, maybe they have a year that they need it now or if you can keep that away from just so they're. Hey, stay on there, I'll I'll keep it upwards at, I won't cut it if you stay on it. They're happy and they'll work at it.
Thank you, just want to hear a little bit about your philosophy.
Yeah, I mean, it's. I would say that's probably eighty percent of the treasures. We're, we all tend to be conservative. I'd rather see it come out, that bottom line come out at zero than a negative. I'd rather see it in two, realistically, two hundred thousand dollars is not very much on that budget. If you can keep within a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars, that's.
You're doing good?
Yes.
All right, well, I just want to say uh thank you, sir, for putting that together. Um with not a whole lot of time in the district or hands around what's all happening, so I know that was a pretty significant task. Just want to say thank you, then apologize to everybody that's listening uh for the very beginning of the meeting, I had us muted. So I did open this up about the review of amended appropriations, I think. So missed that. All right, any other items?
Sure.
Just to clarify, the only thing that we missed would be that we have facilities meeting to add into the dates, right? And other than that, it was just to need to review the minutes and yeah.
Yeah, so it's minor changes they'll see at the next meeting.
Yep.
And then um. These were ones to take action tonight, number six, am I correct, that we discussed?
Yes.
Okay.
Letter A is the approval of the master agreement. We were able to finalize our negotiations with the Bethel Education Association and get the uh. T A contract reviewed for uh revisions and any potential changes. Thumbs up, signed off on in that part, and then we're able to add it to the agenda this evening for Board of Education consideration. So very excited to have a three year contract with our teachers association. We were able to um provide them in return their six frozen steps. And then within the contract, also language changes and then base increases of one percent, one and a quarter, and then two percent in the third final year. I didn't know if the board members had any comments on the process, so.
I would say I appreciated the process, I thought it went very well, key factors that were changes in this negotiation. Last one was all of the board members were present, at least in our room available um to you. Um in our attorney this time um to help make and vote decisions. Um I think that helps significantly and accelerated uh to three days versus going to six to eight months. Um so I thought that was very beneficial, appreciate that you brought that forward us to do. And then just the collaboration that was had by us in the B A and their negotiating.
Yeah, I would agree, I would think all all parties are happy that they're ending the school year with a contract in place and knowing that going into next year. It's been finalized for the next three, which is a step in the right direction for the district.
I agree.
Um letter B uh is the approval of a classified administrator. Uh very excited to uh have Mr. Jason Cook on the agenda this evening. I will also have these folks attend our Board of Education meetings that you can uh get to see, meet them, see them. I thought it was important to get them hired first and foremost, so we have our people solidified. But then also it allows their districts to start the process of replacement as well, so. Uh Mr. Cook has served at Springfield Clark Career Technology Center as the Assistant Technology Director. Came very, very highly recommended from colleagues, former colleagues, and also uh his superiors at the Career Tech Center. Had four years experience as the Assistant I T Director at Clark uh Springfield Court for Tech Center. And then also worked in the private sector. and then also worked in the private sector previously, had a couple of degrees, one in computer networking and the second one in cybersecurity. Uh, and they went over, they went through some fairly substantial upgrades to their technology infrastructures, similar to what we're gonna start engaging in the summer ourselves. And so it's, it's nice to have somebody come on board who's went through access point upgrades and wiring upgrades and being able to add smartboard projectors in the classrooms with our new technology in the K-five building. I feel like we're very blessed with the number of openings in the area to be able to add somebody with that skill set uh to our district this late in the ballgame. Um, then also, uh, provided him some transition days, similar to what we do with other administrators. He actually was here today all day long, I don't know if you know that, he was at the banquet and was around the building getting to meet staff and kind of introduced himself to different people, uh, even before he got hired, so. Uh, but he's invested in the district, his wife is a teacher in the district as well, and I think they're both looking to make a long-term commitment. Uh, and I think it's probably gonna benefit them to be working together as well. So, uh, that's on the agenda also. And then, um, on the agenda for consideration are a couple of other positions. Uh, Catherine Burrell, Guidance Counselor, who will be replacing Mrs. Mara Lance, who we were able to recognize today at our end-of-year employee banquet for her retirement. Uh, once again, thanks to Mrs. Lance for all of her service to the district and the number of students that she's impacted as a guidance counselor. And very excited to bring in Mrs. Burrell, who is currently a guidance counselor at Arcana. Um, and she is a resident um of New Carlyle. So, uh, it's nice to have somebody who has guidance counselor experience, especially when it deals with CCP and uh post-secondary. And also being able to work with students with transcript requests and all those things that our seniors need for success post-graduation. And then secondly was Keely King. Uh, she is uh on the agenda to replace Carrie Livisay, who was an internal transfer, uh, transferred to another grade level earlier this school year, or earlier this summer, excuse me. And then finally, uh, William Murray, who is a substitute custodian. Uh, Terry Stanley, who is currently an employee in our district, well, I should say, serves quite a bit as a substitute, not only for our kitchen, but also as a bus aide. She will be replacing our, our second and final second shift custodian position, and that will put us at full staff heading into the summer with majority of our cleaning going on this summer. You know, we have a couple of uh students that are on, or one student that's on here as well, a volunteer coach.
All right, motion to place ads from the superintendent's report on the consent calendar.
Almost.
Thank you, Lyda, do we have a second?
Awesome.
Both said yes, and then, okay. All right, seconded by Elam. Discussion.
Justin, you've read the um BEA, uh, Bethel Board of Education Agreement in the society.
Yeah. Yes, reviewed it.
And you're comfortable with it?
Yes, yeah, do you find any mistakes? Okay, all right.
That's why I'm asking, because I, I didn't realize we were voting on it tonight.
Well, we just got it.
I understand, but I didn't, I thought we weren't voting on it till the board meeting, so.
Okay, well, we can, we can pull it if you, if you wanna do that.
Well, what's everyone else's comfort level?
I know typically, we don't vote on things uh in work sessions, but you know, like with the um, the volunteer coach, they do start June one.
Right, I mean, some of these I don't have a problem with, I just, I didn't realize we were, it was graduation weekend, and I will apologize to anyone listening, I just, I, yeah. I, I got that Friday, and I thought we weren't voting on it till, till the board meeting.
Well, you can certainly table it, but just if you do, you have to go to the next meeting if you table something.
Can we just pull it? We have to table it?
I mean, we look at it, it mostly normal, right? It doesn't matter, it goes to the next meeting.
It's whatever everyone else's comfort level is.
It didn't matter, I didn't know how well everyone had uh reviewed it or not, so I told Justin to just vote on, as we're voting on a few other items, just so we can close it out.
I mean, I would say, first of my feelings, I feel like Justin's more comfortable with the language in that contract having gone through tooth and nail more prior, more than any of the rest of us, I would say, and I would trust that he's comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with it. I didn't get through the entire thing, I got through about a third of it before this meeting as well, so I cannot certify that I read it. But I trust that Justin's comfortable with it on. And I will read it formally.
I am too. Justin did it on.
But if we vote on it tonight, it's fine.
I, I understand, I'm like, no, I do understand, I'm happy if, you know, if you're not comfortable with that, I'm happy with it as well. It's fine. That's very wishy-washy answer, I understand. Sorry about that.
You're fine. Julie?
Uh, I didn't get through it all either, I was kind of more focused on some of the teacher things and some other things this weekend, so. Um, but I think if Lori wants to wait, we should wait, I mean, it's not.
Okay. All right, so, uh, during our discussion, we are asking to table item A, which is approval of master agreement, um, to the next board meeting on Monday.
Some bonus, Mr. Burrell, we can. Actually, it's not gonna be till.
Seventeenth, seventeenth of June, my apologies.
I'd also like to comment at discussion time, um, Jason Cook. I worked with Jason Cook for about three years at Springfield Clark City C. I speak very highly personally, I was not involved obviously in the interview process in many ways, shape or form, but when I saw that he was who was selected, I was thrilled. I've had a lot of experience with him, he's, he rewired a lot of our buildings when I was there. Um, you know, put in projectors in the classrooms, helped me individually with things like National Honor Society induction and making sure the technology was prepared for things like that throughout our building. Um, you know, and the timing even of things like when you want the music to start and, you know, so on and so forth, so incredibly helpful to me as an instructor. Um, I could call him up and just ask him questions if I had tech problems at my ground. Very helpful, just really wonderful to work with as a technology person, he was our director, but he was, you know, I would call him basically the number two in our district for technology at that time, his experience was fantastic, very trustworthy individual, and I could not be happier to see him in our district. World to death. World to death.
Okay, thank you.
Justin, how many people did we have apply for the uh psychology position?
Uh, well, it's kind of, it's kind of a loaded question, because we probably had a total of fourteen apply, but of that fourteen, you had probably four or five that really didn't have any degree or experience in that area, so legitimately probably nine. Um, and we brought in six.
That's great.
And then there were down to three for the finals.
No, I'm happy.
Yeah. Yeah. You always get some folks that apply for every job, it seems like, and are qualified, this happens in every field.
No, it's, it's fine, but I'm glad to hear that our goal was that.
Yeah, I felt, felt very good, even about uh our other two finalists. They, they all had experience in school settings and were residing in this general area and wanted to get back more towards home, so. We were pretty fortunate to have a couple of our finalists that had four to six years of experience either as the tech director or an assistant with a school setting.
Okay, and uh, and it is, I was the one that had asked to put that on there, so it wasn't Justin after that master agreement that we're taking. Any other discussion? All right. Uh, motion to adopt the consent calendar as amended with the items in that superintendent's report.
Almost.
Thank you, Lori, do we have a second?
Awesome.
Thank you, Julie, for the second, any further discussion? I'd like to close out with, um, since these positions are replacing, uh, retired, uh, you know, Ms. Lance, so I thought that it was a fitting tribute to her and Mr. Ziegler today, and how you organized and orchestrated that, Mr. Ferkx, and just wanna say thank you um, for the event today and how you recognize our, our members. Anything else?
I agree with that, very nice. See, I think the rocking chair is one of them, and even the glove, we had one thirty, actually thirty-one year employee, but recognized for thirty, it's a very, it's a very nice recognition.
Glove was actually awesome, you know.
Probably just. They put a crown on it, I'm not sure what the inside joke is, but they probably paid for it.
Uh, one of our, one of our custodians, that Mrs. Pyttel worked on, she works on our summer crew, Kevin, they call him the king, so it's a burger king.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Her and Kevin used to joke and wave their heads together, so.
Oh, okay.
It was all, all in fun and good nature.
I didn't understand.
Next time you see Kevin calling the king, you'll, you'll get red-faced in life.
All right. Um, could you call the roll, sorry?
Okay, um, Mrs. Basher.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mrs. Reelum.
Yes. Yes. Welcome to our new employees. And now, item. The next one is for review.
Yes, um, on the agenda that will be considered for the meeting on the seventeenth will be uh resignation of Brett Cop, varsity boys' basketball coach. Uh, I'd like to thank Coach Cop for his service to the district. Believe he was uh the head coach for five seasons. Um, he accepted the head basketball position up at Pickwa City Schools, also uh resignation of certified staff. First is Abby Manson, who's been a longtime elementary teacher here. She uh was able to secure employment in her home district, uh, Troy City Schools, where she also uh coaches at, and her kids go to school, and her husband coaches in the district as well. Uh, Kristen Owens, uh, was one that just recently came, um, within the last several days. Uh, Mrs. Owens accepted um a position up at Tip City, uh, indicated that it's a pretty significant pay increase she received. It's unfortunate to have her leave, and then um resignations of um two of our classified staff as well. Uh, these are our student workers, uh, Ryan Santo, who worked uh throughout the year and helped Todd Byrd and Derek Owens extensively, uh, it will be entering um the United States Navy. Uh, and so he's unable to work this summer, and then Cole Brandon, who was our other student worker, uh, is working at a summer camp, uh, I believe out in Minnesota. And so I wish both of those young men, uh, best of luck in the future, they were tremendous to have around the school. Did a lot of cool things, including Cole getting the, the new senior rock out in front, but they did a lot of good work here, and I think hopefully they gained some good experience, and it's always good as a district to be able to hire students that can kind of help out in a lot of different areas, whether it be maintenance or technology, those kind of things, so. Wish Cole and Ryan the best in the future, and also wish Abby and Kristen uh the best as well. On the agenda also will be letter D, review of lunch prices, just put this on here, uh, just to be careful. I do wanna let people know that next year, uh, FBA has approved free lunches for all students. But if something would happen to change, you'd have lunch prices approved. So these uh hold steadfast at where we were for this school year.
Okay.
Uh, so I don't anticipate anybody happening to pay, but if something would happen to change and you don't have your lunch prices approved, you kind of get in a sticky situation, so.
So they've already approved to pay for all of.
Just your free next year, correct? Yeah.
Yeah, and I'd really like to thank uh Miss Ywulski and the cafeteria crew, I know they do a ton of work, and especially this year with all the kids in and out and um just planning around that and their own uh lives, I, I'd like to say a special thank you to them, because they, they sure do a heck of a job.
The last item comes more so from the Treasury Department, uh, that has to do with the annual disposition of records, retention and also disposition from the auditorium state. I don't know if Mr. Wannemaker has any more information on that.
No, I didn't know how um often they work there.
Okay.
It's not something that post places even worry about.
Okay.
So are you a records person now, do you have the right? I have to have something for that.
No, you don't have to have anything for it, you just have to say you'll do it.
I thought there was some training or something.
Brennan wanted it.
But Brennan, Brennan told us you had to have something special.
That was in the auditors report that recommended whoever you appointed that they had, um, do a training, they didn't have experience in it.
Okay.
Will you hire to replace Brennan will be the one that needs to.
Right.
Uh, he, uh, Mr. Wannemaker is the current setting, because we set it as the treasurer's position, so. Is our records, who's something?
And then I have a question about the lunch prices, can those be changed at any time?
Uh, we did change them already, we actually, uh, I had conversations with a financial office last year, uh, and indicated that they had checked with uh the hard department of ed and food services, because I thought our lunch prices were fairly high for our district and the number of free and reduced lunch percentages that we had. We actually were able to lower them, I think, by a quarter last year for K-five, and then also six twelve. They give you a price range that has to fit within, and we actually now are at the lowest of what we're able to charge people of that range.
Right, what I was asking was if, you know, if they did away with the free lunches and these numbers needed to change, we can just do that immediately, right?
You, you can, yes, you can, within the range they provide to you.
Okay.
So I think ours was like two fifty to whatever it was last year, and we were at the high end. And uh, our money-wise, money-wise, in the cafeteria, we're in really good shape, so I didn't understand why we were charging so much, so we were able to reduce it to the minimum of our range.
Right.
But yes, if you needed to readjust it, you would just have to put it back on the agenda and have it voted on.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, is there something, right?
Oh, middle of the year. I don't know if you can, I think you have to, I think you have to submit it, is that correct, you have to submit it, I don't know if you can change it.
Part of your submission, when you send in your beginning of the year, early in the year, just to get your um certificate that says you can run it.
Yeah.
The states vary, and I wasn't sure, not on the subject, but you have to be within a certain level of federal funding, you can't just say, well, federal, federal says we're gonna pay three dollars and twenty-five cents for a meal. You have to be within a certain range of that one at all times, you can't just say, well, because basically they're saying, we'll pay, we're paying that much for free, you have to charge close to that much.
That's correct, our, our two dollars and fifty cents for the K through five, and our two seventy-five for six through twelve is the minimum of the range that's provided to us.
But that's what I was, she was about changing, and that's.
Yeah, we could, we couldn't lower it any, any less than that, if we had to do anything, we'd have to increase it.
That's just it.
This is the lowest that we can make it.
Right, and I was, the reason I was asking, like it's like I said, can you do it mid-year, is if we, if they did drop that program, prices are going crazy.
Yeah.
For, so.
Yeah.
We, we may have to look at changing it, and I was just asking if we were allowed to change it, like she said, mid-year.
That's a good question, I'd have to look into that, I don't, I don't know if you can do that.
I wouldn't think they'd drop it for a program.
Yeah. That'd be a tough one to tell people and then change mid-year.
I mean, it has to work.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm vague, I know I was.
Yeah.
And then, any other questions, uh, for Mr. Ferkx with regards to A through E? And the table A at the top, uh, for the next meeting?
Thank you for your work you did with that master agreement.
Yes.
And those are not a fun read, go through the details and everything.
Yeah, if you get through.
The notes that we have, and so, that's a lot.
You'll see one section within it that has struck language still, and the reason why it is struck and still in the contract had to do with fair share, which was outlawed by uh Supreme Court, which no longer says that you have to pay union fees, so. That's the reason why, that wasn't necessarily a negotiated item, that was a constitutional change.
So far, I've just hit the highlights, because I don't even have every single note from the last couple of days that we came down to, and I know you do. Um, and I just hit the highlights. Um, and I just hit the highlights of the things I know or remember.
Sure. Any other items from the superintendent? Do you have anything else you want?
No, no, sorry.
Sorry? Alright, so then we move into our board report and hearing of the public. Um, I see no questions on YouTube. Um, executive session. I know we have to go into executive session, uh, I believe for item one. Does anybody have any other reasons to go into executive session? And we would be going to executive session under item one is to consider the appointment, uh, of the public employee. Alright. Hearing nothing. Um, we have a motion to go into the executive session.
Almost.
Thank you, Lori. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Julie, for the second. Uh, discussion. I know, uh, based on my knowledge, uh, there will be no decision following the executive session. At least no planned decision following this executive session. Um, so there is, do not anticipate us voting. Any other items to discuss? Mr. Wannemaker, did you call the?
Ms. Sebastian?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Um, Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Helem?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes. Alright, we move into executive session at six thirty-four PM. You have it.